Everybody's on the same page now?
Yeah, that's, that's.
Based on the question of that.
Okay, I'll give you that.
You are authorized, please. I'm in town in Florida. This is now in session. Honorable Mayor Jeff Mason presides.
Thank you, Chief Roberts. Connor McDonald, would you open us in prayer?
Sure. Lord, thank you for this day. Thank you for your blessings. Thank you for the weather, just all the blessings that you give us, Lord. We thank you for being able to gather here together tonight. Lord, we pray you would guide our decisions, Lord. Give us wisdom, Lord, in every decision we make that will do only those things that will bring honor and glory to you. We pray that you bless us and give us a good evening in Jesus's name. Amen.
I submit the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Roll call, please, Mr. Stacey.
Helen Bowes. Carrie Givens. Billy Bass. Greta Kirby.
Here.
Charles Kent.
Here.
Ron Pascal. Lynn Brown.
Here.
Scotty Barrett.
Here.
Matt Inyard.
Here.
Cordell Smith.
Here.
Danny Orazari.
Here.
Stephen Lish.
Here.
Eddie Stout.
Here.
Casey Elrod.
Here.
Justin Martin. Javen Krebs.
Here.
Tommy Vane.
Here.
Junior Fields. Connor McDonald.
Here.
Teresa Bush.
Here.
Danny Huff.
Here.
Ed De La Rosa.
Here.
Sixteen, we do have a point. All right. At this time, we will take approval of the minutes, the April twenty-eighth meeting, April twenty-eighth meeting.
Motion approved.
Second. Motion approved, Casey Elrod, second. Matt Inyard, any questions, discussions, or corrections to those minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries, minutes are approved. Number seven, first on the agenda tonight, we do have a, Mr. Art Haskins and James King are here to give us another benefit of the injury to our pipeline, so come on up, Mr. Art. And Andrew.
Thank you. So I've been here a couple of times to talk about this when we've had open houses and everything else. We actually started back when TBA announced their desire to change the coal and started their process. So June of twenty twenty-one is when we started this whole process. As you can see by the little handout there, we are still on our schedule that was proposed from the very beginning. We received actually a little bit early our certificate from FERC, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, in April second, had decided that this project is approved from their perspective. We still are waiting on a couple other permits. So we need a water permit from TDEC, ARAP, or we use it as a four oh one procedure. And we've had our public hearing, they're reviewing the comments, and then they'll see if they make any changes to their draft or not. And we expect that to be issued towards the end of this month. And then we still have an Army, US Army Corps permit, it's a federal water permit called a four oh four. And we're expecting that at the end of July. We just updated that with some new information. So having said all that, we're in the rehearing phase from FERC and anticipating our implementation plan from us, our notice received, which will be hopefully received to start at the end of October or first of November to start construction. So construction, that's kind of where we're at with our project. Of course, TBA has already said that they're going to pick gas and not use coal anymore. So they'll be doing, they're already in process of doing their work. They have leveled off the site or working on leveling the site and they're anticipating, I just had a meeting with TBA recently, so they're anticipating their first natural gas generator to be delivered in in August. So let's talk about construction. There's a little bit of a handout there, the one that looks like a little pipeline kind of going down the, going down the page. And one of the issues that we're going to have with any large project like this, it's one hundred and twenty-two miles across eight counties. And so even though it's in the same right-of-way, it's about a fifty-foot easement currently, and so we'll need a little bit more space, so temporary workspace. And to do that, we'll have to clear some trees in different areas. So we've had temporary work agreements with, with the landowners. In this county, we're a hundred percent signed on our temporary work spaces. And overall, we're doing really well with this whole process, but here's where we're at. So you can only clear trees during the tree clearing window. You can't cut trees at any time of the year, you can only cut them at a certain time of the year. So October through the first of April is the time in which you can cut down trees for this type of project. So the first thing, the two crews, there'll be a crew that starts in Hartsville, Drawsdale County, where we're going to build our new compressor station, and another crew that starts over in Rome County at Kingston Plant there. And they'll do a survey and follow in all the landowner improvements and where the right-of-way is going to be and the temporary workspace and stuff. But they'll do a survey, and then a crew will come right behind them and cut trees. Because we've got to get all the trees cut, even if we're going to do construction in the summer, we've got to get all the trees cut first. So that crew will go through from both directions and they'll be cutting trees. Then there'll be another crew that will come in and do what's down in the bottom of the page where they have trenches crossings. So anywhere where you have a larger water crossing, such as on the other side, the Emery River, over here we cross by Old Fort One, we'll cross underneath the Cumberland River, the Goose Creek area. I don't remember all the crossings, but those are some of our regular crossings that I'm aware of where we'll do what's called an HDB or horizontal directional drill. So they'll set that all up, and that'll have to run twenty-four hours a day for that period of time it takes them to drill underneath, usually thirty to fifty deep below the bottom of the river, and do that. So those are crews that do that, and they'll go from place to place to do that. At the same time then, there'll be crews that'll start the clearing of the right-of-way, the rest of it, getting the dirt leveled off, the top soil, for where the top soil is at. We're already at, I think, out, gone and done some soil samples already. We're working with the extension service and through UT to do soil sampling across the whole right-of-way in areas. And then we'll start laying out the pipes, and then they'll start welding up the pipes, and then they'll dig a trench. All of the things, as you can see down there, and it kind of moves in crews, like a little caterpillar from each end, and they move towards the middle. And so sometime next, let's see, twenty-sixth November, it'll be all in the ground, it'll be all in service. And November first, we're supposed to deliver gas to the TBA plant so they can start commissioning their stuff. So between now and then, it doesn't take more than three to four months or so at each individual location. But it'll, it'd be a slow process of the kind of crawling across the counties and working your way. Since you guys are closer to this end of it, you'll get second county in. You'll get hit pretty early with the landowners to this area. If you're in Putman County, you're probably towards the end of the process, because you're middle of both sides. There'll be about fifteen hundred workers in the two different crews, plus, and about forty percent of those is kind of the target for local hires. We'll have a vendor fair once you get our contractor, we'll be a union contractor. I don't have the announcement of who that union contractor is yet, but hoping to have that fairly soon. I know we're having a big public event in about the middle of July. And they'll have a vendor fair, looking for local vendors and support staff that they'll need to do their work. Working with TCAT as well, looking for welders or other workers that would work with the unions and on the pipeline. And I think then the last point, and I've shared this information before, it's all available publicly, is that when we're done, we pay an ad valorem tax currently across all the counties. When we're done with construction, all of our workers have come through, all of the gas and tanks and food they bought and housing that they've rented or paid for, places to park their RV or whatever they've done. We have that huge direct and indirect economic impact. But when we're done with all this, we'll get taxed. We get taxed on the value of what it is we move in our pipeline, and we also get taxed on the value of the pipeline itself. So this project will come up with what's called the ad valorem tax. That information, once it's all done, goes to the state, and then the state auditor comes up with how much it is, back to each of the counties. Our estimate for this county for the first year when we start paying that is about one point three million. And then over the next thirty years, that value of what it is in the ground will decrease, it's depreciated out for the value of the natural gas that flows through it, and it'll still stay the same or increase depending on what the price and the value of that part is. So that's kind of the process. See if anybody have any questions.
When you say it'll increase one point three million, is that going to be a dollar a dollar tax revenue that we see? Or is that like the property tax where you see an increase, but you only see an appraisal value on the revenue side of the county?
I have no idea.
That may be, sorry, that's probably not.
It's an ad valorem tax, and that's, so just like an appraisal value, if we, if the state says, hey, we think it's worth this much, and our company says, and our consultant says, no, we think it's only worth this much, we'll fight that battle too. It's like if you had your home appraised, but that's the estimated value based on twenty twenty-one numbers that we think based on what the project costs and what we think we're going to get taxed on. It's about that, give or take, who knows how much. Not the most, it's not the least. Maybe you just don't have the shortest pipeline, you don't have a compressor station, it means it's kind of in the middle of what counties are going to be. It's eleven point five across any county. And then it's in the, a lot more than that in the direct and indirect economic impact. We base that off of per game and stuff, so. If anybody wants, I can share that economic, it was done by UT Baker, economic impacts.
Any other questions for Mr. Art? All right. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
All right, the other announcement is, in your packet, you do have a resignation letter from Lady Derry for District One, so we will fill that seat as well with the other opening. We'll probably do that for the July meeting. All right, one thing I did skip over, but no one signed up for public comment, so there is no public comment. Item number eight is amendments to the general agenda, approve of the general agenda. You do have two handouts that you were given. They are Blunt County and Sevier County Juvenile Contracts. We just need to get those contracts approved before we can sign those and be able to house juveniles in those two cities. At this time, I would take a motion to add those two, those two add-ons and approve the agenda.
Motion to add those and approve the agenda, second.
All right, a motion from Matt Inyard and Second Junior Fields. All right, a motion to second for the amendment and approval of the agenda. Any questions or discussions? Seeing none, we will, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, the agenda is approved. All right, item number nine is the county mayor report. Courthouse update, we do have signed contracts on both ends now with the state, so that has started. I did talk with Baton Engineering last week, they are working on bid specs for windows and HVAC, so hopefully get those out and bid soon. Did you get a notice of permit for our landfill sale expansion last week? So we're in a forty-five day of technical review and public comment, so hopefully we will have a full-on permit by first of August. The fair starts June thirtieth, so just wanted to be aware of that and come out and support the fair. And that's all I've got, and I have any questions for me?
Would it be beneficial for any of us to make a public comment on that sale hearing?
It's, unless you have a technical, unless you're. No, it's, it's, the public comment, Johnny, if I'm wrong, it's technical. It's, you can't just say I don't want it, you've got to have a reason for the, for structural reasons or technical reasons for a comment. All right. Any other questions for me? All right, you have your financial reports, any questions for Daisy? All right, seeing none. Item ten is your committee reports. One that's not in there is the solid waste meeting from last month, but we will have it at the twenty-third meeting. Item number eleven is new business, that is presentations there, that is some reapportments and internal control assessments and some annual reports. Seeing nothing there. All right, item B is resolutions. You have some budget amendments, resolutions one through six are one oh one and one oh one, one twenty-two, one seventy-one, and two oh seven are one forty-one and one forty-one. So at this time, we will take a motion to group approve or roll them in second.
Motion to group approve, second.
I have a motion to group approve all the budget amendments. Second by Matt Inyard, any questions or discussions on these, on these amendments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Greta Kirby.
Yes.
Charles Kent.
Yes.
Lynn Brown.
Yeah.
Scotty Barrett.
Yes.
Matt Inyard.
Yes.
Cordell Smith.
Yes.
Danny Orazari.
Yes.
Stephen Lish.
Yes.
Eddie Stout.
Yes.
Casey Elrod.
Yes.
Javen Krebs.
Yes.
Tommy Vane.
Yes.
Junior Fields.
Yes.
Connor McDonald.
Yes.
Teresa Bush.
Yes.
Danny Huff.
Here.
Ed De La Rosa.
Yes.
All right, that passes. All right, that, that passes, thank you. Item number seven is a resolution to establish and update our occupational safety and health program plan. I would take a motion to approve that.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved, Matt Inyard.
Second.
Second, Junior Fields, all right, any questions or discussions on this resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? All right, that motion, that resolution passes. All right, items eight and nine are the resolutions concerning the issuance of the general obligations bonds for the landfill. I have Mr. John Warner here to come up, and if we have any questions on these. The first one is just the authorizing the issuance of the, well, John, I'll let you kind of explain it then. Land and House.
The two bits is a good job.
That's about as far as I could get.
First, what you have in front of you is the initial resolution, and it's simply the declaration that Smith County is going to, that Smith County is going to issue up to sixteen million dollars in bonds for the landfill project. That has in that resolution, the notice that we put in the local paper, where the public will have a twenty-day notification about the intent of the county commissioner. The second resolution has the detailed resolution, and that goes to the process in which the way you're going to sell these bonds, be a competitive public sale. They invest, invest certain authorities, it's the mayor, to be able to do things in the transaction. It talks about how the bonds will be sold, the manner of sales they'll be sold, what a typical bond option it looks like, what to do with proceeds at the end of the sale, and the way that you'll go about awarding them. We will award these bonds to the, the highest bidder, which would be the least cost of money for the county, the true interest cost, globally paying attention to the visitor, which is not necessarily the key part. So that being said, Mayor, are there any other questions anywhere?
Okay. Can we vote, can we group those together, vote?
They didn't separate.
They didn't separate, all right. I, I will need a, a motion on res, on resolution eight, the initial resolution and authorizing of the issuance of the general obligation bonds.
Motion to.
Second.
A motion to Casey Elrod, second, Matt Inyard. This did pass unanimously through the solid waste meeting, our last meeting. All right, motion to second, any questions or discussions?
Why is it sixteen? But we're talking about different things, so just an explanation on the record.
Commissioner, that's an excellent question. Bond council is very particular about what a resolution say and don't say. What we want to do is we want to be able to anticipate that in the event that we have premium bonds, meaning someone pays more than a thousand dollars for each bond. It gives us county the option on what to do with those excess proceeds. Number one, they can keep it and put it in the construction fund for the benefit of the landfill. Or number two, they can make the option, say, we don't want this additional money, let's just give it back to the buyer. And what we'll do is we'll take our sixteen, our fifteen million dollars, but you'll wind up paying back less than fifteen million dollars back to the bondholders. As odd as that might sound, that actually does happen in many places. So this just gives the county an option on what to do with these bond proceeds. It does not obligate you to sell sixteen million, no, not any close.
Any other questions or discussions on resolution eight? All right, seeing none, roll call. Sorry.
So last time we were talking about all the different options of one and two, the all at once issuance, and then splitting it up into two different sessions. Is this going to lock this in one way or another?
This is going all, all in one.
If that, if that. If that is the preference of the mayor at the time before we go through the sale, if the markets look good, then yes, we'll probably do this all at one time. The cost of issuance will be less, the execution of the bonds, everything else can end up the same. We'll make the bond sales much more attractive. Much more attractive, and that means that you get better pricing. So doing it all at one time would probably be the better thing to do. But let's suppose if the markets are not as favorable, but you want to get the project going and you need to have some money, then splitting it up will be an option. But you're not obligating one way or the other by passing this resolution.
So would we then vote, make that final vote later on?
It's not a vote, no, sir, it won't be a vote. It'll be something that in consultation with us, we'll be talking with Daisy and with the mayor. Here's where we are, here's what the marketplace looks like, and then, and again, assured that you'll be able to spend the money down in a timely manner, then yes, you can go decide how to issue those bonds.
So this vote authorizes.
Yes, sir, it does.
To have the authority to make that decision.
And among others.
For this body when that time comes.
That is correct, yes, sir. Remember, the state constitution gives him one responsibility. He is the chief fiscal officer of the county. So in a sense, that's why he has that responsibility.
And the reason we want to go one way, because we think, we looked at it, and we'll probably spend that money really quick when we start, money will start spending. We don't want to get halfway into the first sale and, and the other projects, and then be like, oh, we gotta wait two, three more years before we do, we need any more money, so we wanted to have it, to be able to spend it.
Or you have to go back to the, you have to go to the marketplace again nine months from now, twelve months from now, and all of a sudden you have to go through the whole process once again, and it's just cost of that. So as a municipal advisor, everything else will be the same and, and thinking, or actually going to be executed the way that it can be projected, then we would strongly recommend this, because issuance down is what we possibly can.
Do you have any projections on how much the interest rate would have to come down before the split option is advantageous?
I'm doing math right now. It will probably have to be around seventy-five basis points. And that's when it breaks, that's when it breaks, Dean. And will the market at this point drop down seventy-five basis points between the day of issuance and the time of having to reload to do this again? It's not that far. Is that right?
Any other questions? All right. We'll roll call the first resolution.
Greta Kirby.
Yes.
Charles Kent.
Yes.
Lynn Brown. Scotty Barrett.
Yes.
Matt Inyard.
Yes.
Cordell Smith.
Yes.
Danny Orazari.
Yes.
Stephen Lish.
Yes.
Eddie Stout.
Yes.
Casey Elrod.
Yes.
Javen Krebs.
Yes.
Tommy Vane.
Yes.
Junior Fields.
Yes.
Connor McDonald.
Yes.
Teresa Bush.
Yes.
Danny Huff.
Here.
Ed De La Rosa.
Yes.
It is your answer. Item, all right, item number nine is resolution oh nine, it means the authorization, it's the big one, the authorization of the issuance of the general obligation bonds. I would take a motion to approve that at this time.
Motion to approve.
I heard you first, second. Who had the second? Gotcha. I have a motion to the second. On that, any questions or discussions on this? All right, seeing none, all roll call, please.
Greta Kirby.
Yes.
Charles Kent.
Yes.
Lynn Brown.
Yes.
Scotty Barrett.
Yes.
Matt Inyard.
Yes.
Cordell Smith.
Yes.
Danny Orazari.
Yes.
Stephen Lish.
Yes.
Eddie Stout.
Yes.
Casey Elrod.
Yes.
Javen Krebs.
Yes.
Tommy Vane.
Yes.
Junior Fields.
Yes.
Connor McDonald.
Yes.
Teresa Bush. Danny Huff.
Here.
Ed De La Rosa.
Yes.
That passes, thank you. All right, item number twelve is the listed nuggets, I would take a motion to approve those.
Motion approved, second.
Second motion approved, Junior Fields, second, Connor McDonald. Any questions or discussions on those nuggets? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? They are approved. Item number thirteen, I will turn it over to our budget chair, Mr. Connor McDonald, for your budget presentation. Just so we're clear, we're not voting.
Correct. And make sure everybody knew that.
All right, good evening, everyone. I have a PowerPoint presentation to go through regarding the budget. I have hard copies, there's some small numbers on there, so some of y'all, I only have about twelve or thirteen of the hard copies. So if you're comfortable with maybe younger eyes, taking a look at the presentation, that would be great. And feel free to adjust if you want to around the room. Like the mayor said, I'm not looking at anything tonight, this is just for information for the body as we're going to be considering these budgets. So this is the first budget. The first budget under the eighty-one act, it was somewhat through experience with the committee members, but I thought it went very smoothly. Don't like our microphones tonight. So just want to give some information, the twenty twenty-five budget committee included myself as the vice chairman. We had Mr. Stephen Lish and the other four members there. We had eight meetings as a committee. I went back and looked at the time, approximately twenty hours in meetings, and I know I can say, from talking to several of them, probably another five to ten hours in prep and discussion outside of, not discussion, but prep outside of that. I think most of our members also attended one of the Tuuk School Board budget discussions, so a lot of involvement. I really appreciate the commitment. I really appreciate the commitment and the effort from all of our committee members. They made it very easy to be the chairman from an administration standpoint. So I appreciate all of them for that. So what I'm sure is going to be the big question when it comes to budget time, tax rates and salaries. These are probably two of the most important areas for the people here in this room. So I want to address that first and foremost.
Can we move it away?
Next slide. So as you can see, property tax remains unchanged, does not increase in this proposed budget. This is a chart that illustrates where your property tax dollars are being spent right now in current allocation. You can see over sixty percent to the general fund, another twenty-seven percent to the general purpose school. So almost ninety percent going to the general fund for the schools. A couple of specific items broken out there. I did want to point out just a few things about the property tax rate. So our property tax rate is one of the lowest in the upper Cumberland. We are thirty-five percent lower than a couple of our relatively similar neighboring counties. We're the ninth out of ten lowest property tax rate in the upper Cumberland region. And we're in the bottom third property tax rates for the state of Tennessee, which is great for our residents of Smith County because less taxes. But it does also mean that there's less revenue to go around. It means there's less option to find more roads, less options for new vehicles, new equipment, things like that. So it is a blessing that we're in one of the lower tax counties in the state. But you know, that does come with the things that come along with that. Employee salaries and benefits, which is another obvious point of concern for everyone in this room. So while this budget does only include the constitutionally state required increases, I want to point out that we have made a lot of significant investments in county employees over the past few years. We've made the increases across every department. I've talked to the mayor, we've been in every department in the past several years. I've seen at least a twenty percent increase in the salary line item funding. Longevity pay is introduced and you can see on the slides a couple of the departments that worked out particularly to point out, just because they have seen a significant increase as well. So we are, we might have front-loaded a lot of our work we did on salaries, but we have done a lot in salaries in the past few years and in benefits for our county employees. Turning to the budget, as it is approved by the budget committee. So we are presenting a balanced budget as required by state law. To get there, we do have to get a general fund draw, but we'll go over that in the final numbers. And I found a couple of things in the budget in two categories. You've got your recurring revenue and expenses, then you have your non-recurring revenue and expenses. So I'm going to try to flesh that out so we can really understand where we are, where this proposed budget is and what it means for the county. So, Matt? So here on this slide, we've got three numbers. The first number is our recurring revenues for fiscal year twenty-five. That is the current year that we are in. So fiscal year twenty-five's budget for those revenues. The second number is estimated budget for June. So that is how much has actually been collected up until June. So you've got at least probably, based on that number, five to six weeks left of collections to come in that have not reflected there. That is the actual number as of when that report was run. And then the last number is our proposed budget. So you can see a slight decrease in projected recurring revenues for the upcoming fiscal year. Part of the reason that that is a decrease, there was a couple of pretty significant property tax issues this year that we had to address. The closing of the mine essentially, essentially shutting down a lot of operations of the mine. Significantly impacts our property tax base because of how those mineral services are collected, things like that. That impacts how much we collect on property taxes. And that would have been hard enough for Mr. Collins, Terry Collins, to recover from. But he had a second pretty significant event in the, there was a significant change in bond sales reported raw materials. Based on their previous reporting, this one was significantly lower. And those two things together resulted in about a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar reduction in property tax revenue. So Terry Collins is actually, he's still hopeful that he can actually get through the year without an increase in any value, which would be a miracle if he can. But he's never, he prides himself on having never had a decrease in any value. And he is out working sales, working new fields, additions, to try to make sure that even though we're not getting reprisal, that those two significant hits don't actually lower our property tax revenue. So I'm actually looking at what has changed from last year to this year. Investment income, we are decreasing our projection on investment income. So in the current fiscal year, we budgeted seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in investment income. We collected, it's over a million and a half at this point, over one-point-five-million in investment income. And that is the amount of money we're able to raise, get in the interest of our money. So that is very dependent upon national interest rates. That's why we always project that one very conservatively because if interest rates don't clear for tomorrow, then that number could fall to zero tomorrow. It would never fall all the way to zero, but it could significantly reduce. So we're reducing our projection by about a quarter just to be careful. We're optimistic and hopeful that it will be at this point next year. Secondly, we raised at least another million, maybe a million and a half. But we don't want to project for revenues that we're not confident that we'll have. The second is tipping fees. There's a reduction, pretty significant reduction in tipping fees as well. But Jeff, the mayor, and Johnny, we talked pretty extensively about that and how that goes into the project with the landfill, the bond issuance. So I'm not going to go over to that anymore. And then the wheel tax revenue. So we had an increase in the revenue from the wheel tax, which I'll talk about that more in just a second. So this slide shows down where all of our property, where all of our revenues come from in the county. So you can see property tax and tipping fees may go for about half. And because solid waste numbers are really kind of unique because the revenue and the expenses are in their own bucket, nobody else can really touch. I went ahead on the next slide and broke out everything else. So this shows you the revenues for the upcoming fiscal year without solid waste. Property tax, about forty percent, gas tax, ten percent, sales tax. And then you see the wheel tax, which again, that is including the increased wheel tax. Although you can see it, it's a very small slide, it's five-point-eight percent. So we went from two percent to five-point-eight percent, the increase in the wheel tax this past year. The other remaining source is a pretty significant chunk. I put in there on the next slide a couple of the specific items. So if you have this spreadsheet, you can take it home and look at those. I'm not going to go over them specifically, but there's a number of smaller revenue items that we just get throughout the year. So that is the revenues, the recurring expenses, sort of the same numbers. So the current, thirty-three and a half million as collected through June was twenty-nine million. And our proposed budget is twenty-eight-point-seven million. So we've also reduced our projected recurring expenses in the upcoming year. A significant part of that is because of the landfill project. A lot of the costs that were traditionally used on the landfill project are not in the upcoming budget. So as you can see on the next slide, the other equipment inside development had a pretty significant decrease. Crushed down on that third line, I included that just as an example of some of the increased in cost of goods that we're having to deal with as a county. You know, a two-hundred-thousand-dollar line is now three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. So against the nature of inflection, cost of goods and trying to increase the amount of roads and how is that we are servicing with our highway department. Last one, equipment operators, I want to be sure to put in here to explain. So this is the only salary line item in this budget that is increasing beyond the constitutional requirements. And I want to explain why that's happening. So last year, we voted to add an additional equipment operator for the highway department. They did not fill that job right away. So it was not included immediately in the line item as an oversight. So we're replacing that, it's already, funds are incorporated, it just wasn't in the line item. And that's part of that increase, that's a hundred-point-five-thousand-dollar total increase, which includes that. And Miki asked us to move a foreman position that he had opened down into equipment operators. He said he's comfortable with operating with one fewer foreman and one more equipment operator. I believe that's the best use of his crew, county funds. So that is why you see that change in that one salary line item. Our current expenses, you can go ahead and skip one slide. Go ahead to the slide about solid waste, Matt. And I think this is one of the more important slides of the night to just give everyone an idea of where we're spending our money as a county. So if you look at the charts that we have, over half of this county's expenses go towards safety, justice and first responders. That's a, that's a big category. It includes sheriff's office, jail, correctional officers, the court facilities, EMS, fire department, S P squad, you know, all that comes under that, that large umbrella. So over half goes to just those two. If you add the highway department, which is another twenty percent, we're at almost three-quarters of our budget. That is safety, first responders and highways. So that shows, I think, our priorities in the county. That's what, I know in our regional office, that's what people told me they cared about. That's what we try to do, and that's what this proposed budget spends the money on. And again, there's a, this slide, this upcoming slide breaks down the others as well. So you can see just a little bit about where all of those expenses are. Most of those are funded by grants. And so they are listed as expenditures in the budget. So the capital projects, I know capital projects is always something that, that people ask about, so I'm going to address those. Probably the longest discussion that we had as a committee. I think it's pretty safe to say over the course of several months with these capital projects. And this is where I think we ended up adding millions of dollars. Because we did ask, yes, every department, submit not just your, your immediate needs. We want to know, to try to start planning for the future, what are the immediate needs? And what are the, you know, these are the needs that we're going to have in the next couple of years that we need to go ahead and be addressing. And that number was somewhere between ten and fifteen million dollars for all of those things. And we were looking at a pot of about five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars that we had to spend. So again, every, every director, I see, every profit, sheriff, every, every one of them that got up there, like, man, I wish I could give you everything you're asking for. I'd have a big old problem somewhere out there. But unfortunately, we, we had to make the decisions we had to make. And so we ended up approving, submitting to the commission for approval, two police vehicles, one ambulance rebound, some EMS, heart monitors and a new dump truck for the highway department. Again, probably the toughest decisions to make as a committee. But we'll, we want to talk more about that. We can, we can come back and talk about those, those discussions. So non-recurring revenue and expenses, I can go through this pretty quick. We have a bunch of grants, five-point-eight million dollars in grants, ARP, courthouse grants. A lot of those ARP grants are holdover grants, they're not actually, we didn't receive them this year. Received them in the past and haven't spent them, so they haven't been carried over. So that's why you see a pretty significant number there. And then the projects that we're spending those on, on the next slide, about five-point-nine million in the non-recurring expenses. So the courthouse project, two-point-eight of that, and then the rest, the public utility project. So next slide is the fund balance. As I mentioned at the start, we do have to make a fund balance draw on our current budget this year. Our current fund balance is just over eleven-point-five million. You can see the difference in the recurring items are about two-point-five billion expenses over revenues. The non-recurring items are about a hundred-thousand dollars, leaving about two-point-six million in recurring, or if expenses over revenues, which would leave our fund balance right at about nine million dollars. When I say that, in a pretty significant, I agree, that probably was quite a shock and numbers that you weren't anticipating. We have been, like I was talking about with the interest income, we've been very conservative in our revenue projections. We hope that this is the worst-case scenario where the economy falls off the cliff, revenues fall to levels that even we haven't anticipated in the past, and expenses are way higher than we're anticipating. Daisy, I probably shouldn't put you on the spot like this, but last year, but I'm going to. But last year, we projected about a one-point-five-million-dollar fund balance draw. What are we actually going to do this year? So what's that actual, it's going to be this year? So you're saying this year we're already hitting like that? Okay. So we needed to have approximately our, our proposed budget last year with some of those property tax revenues hitting and things like that. So again, we passed the budget on what could happen, and that's what these numbers represent. Always trying to be very conservative. So these are just a couple of observations. Obviously, looking at the last slide, if spending remains at current levels, and trust me, we would, we cut some budgets that were presented to us when we thought there was spending that did not, that we needed to adjust down. But there's just, there's not a lot of help in this budget. I mean, we've got, we're paying for, you know, mostly goes to salaries for things like law enforcement, for EMS, for our highway department's materials, which are continuing to go up in price. So if we continue at those current spending levels, then revenues are going to have to increase at some point in the next couple of years. So that may be the somber thing to take away from this, this presentation is to go ahead and start thinking about that, that revenues are going to have to increase. I put this on there, permanent or multi-year, budget committee members establishing some kind of process in the next year where either we've got, you know, some, a group of people on for three years and then go off, and then a new group is on or staggered. We had a couple of budget committee members who had some experience on the previous budget year, and it was very helpful when we got to situations like where the director would say, well, the understanding last year was, you know, you would do some affairs last year and this year you do some of mine. And you know, we were just standing there. The ones of us who just came on this year are sitting there, I have no idea if that was the understanding or if we're just didn't sold back the goods or was. So the, getting something set in stone where we've got some kind of multi-year budget committee where overlaps, I think would be beneficial for the county and maybe would encourage things like kicking the can down the road. You know, next year, you're going to be off, it'll be somebody else's turn. But again, that is not an official committee recommendation at all, that's just an observation I have. So, Matt? So looking at the proposed school budget, I thought it was helpful to look at some of the historical data to explain what the budget committee's decision was on this. So as you can see in this graph, the schools have always had revenue saving expenses going back to twenty-nineteen, several years beyond that, but that's just the years that I pulled. These are actual numbers. So last year, we set the school budget expenditure at thirty-eight-point-one million. This year, Director Smith asked for an increased budget at forty-one-point-three million. You can see that, that's the blue dotted line in the map. The school board did not approve that budget and actually rejected it and voted to send us the same budget that they had last year, thirty-eight-point-one million dollars. A big part of our discussion with the committee was around how the schools are actually going to be spending money and how much expenditures are going to be over revenues in the upcoming year. So I'm going to be very transparent during our budget discussions. My understanding of what we were told was that the school expenses would be about five-hundred-thousand dollars more than the dollars more than their revenues. That is what, what we have been told, that they did fund balance about five-hundred-thousand dollars. And this, this woman, this bitch, she said it would be higher. Uh, she said it would probably be around two million dollars. Um, so when I came originally to that budget committee meeting, I was expecting the deficit higher than, than two million dollars. I think we projected, but we approved a four-point-five million dollar last year, uh, deficit. And so I was expecting to see something like that and we heard that that was potentially going to be about five-hundred-thousand dollars. Um, that's a lot of the reason why I voted in favor of sending that budget on for, for your consideration. So I asked the director to pull, Director Ditten to pull the most recent revenues and expenses. Uh, she believes what I've got for the projected for twenty-twenty-five, that they will end up around thirty-four-point-three million with expenses, revenues about thirty-one and a half. Uh, so that's about a, almost a three-million-dollar deficit, two-point-seven. There is about one-point-five million dollars in open purchase orders from the school that could, depending on if they actually fit the budget, could impact where their number ends up at the end of the year. But if those numbers do hold up, that's a two-point-seven to three-million-dollar deficit that is going to have to be made up for with school lines. Again, those are just estimates. We wouldn't know the actual numbers until July first. Um, so at this point, I don't say, I'm not so sure what to say because when we were in the budget committee, uh, we were over one understanding and, uh, as of about eight hours ago, I found out about that three-million-dollar number. Uh, so we're not voting on anything today, uh, because of just a little bit of uncertainty about that one forty-one line. I definitely think that it would be good for us to wait until after July first, see what actually happens with their fund balance, see if they do hit it, almost three million or if they did, you know, a million, one-point-five, something like that, that would better allow us to make a decision about whether or not we want to, to approve that budget or whether we are concerned about sustainability, want to have other questions or other discussions. Um, so I was very prepared to come in here and say that I was, uh, excited that, that we had a, a school board that was going to be watching out on expenditures and, and taking this serious. Um, and when we had a five-hundred-thousand-dollar deficit, that's not where we are apparently. Uh, and so it's something that I think we're going to need to figure out between now and the next day that we have this budget here and, uh, decide what we're going to do about that. So I know unfortunately that is giving us a long school budget because we don't, don't really have a lot to know at this point. Um, and regarding the one forty-three fund, I understand Director Ditten's been contacting the schools because of some pretty significant issues with the revenues on that fund. And I don't expect that'll be the budget that we actually vote on anyway. Um, I suspect we'll have to do some changes to that because it's, uh, pretty significantly, they're, they're going to need to adjust those revenues, uh, before we, we vote on it. So that's about it. Uh, but that's a lot of information. That's the last slide. Trying to just fill about four months of meetings and, uh, discussions and, uh, you know, trying to figure out where to spend the money down into about fifteen, twenty minutes, uh, maybe a little longer than that. But I hope that does maybe give you a clearer picture of where we are. Sorry that I can't paint a better picture, but I think it's the most physically conservative, responsible, uh, picture that we have, uh, the budget that we were given. So I think if you have any questions about the process, I'm more than happy to take questions, uh, either right now or, you know, anytime over the next two weeks, as long as it's just questions and information, you can, we can reach out anytime, uh, as long as there's no deliberation or anything like that. Uh, thank you to budget committee members again. Thank you to Director Ditten, she was our secretary and also our, our main source of information for us. So that is the budget committee presentation for now. All have any questions? For me? For me, for you to go over to the member.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Connor. Thank y'all for your work. The, uh, the ad will go in the paper next Monday, but she will not vote on it. You can't vote on it the twenty-third time is not right. So we're looking at probably either a special, if y'all want to do a special call in early July or wait till our regular July meeting to vote on the budget. It's totally whatever you guys want to do on that, Matt.
Director Ditten, will you have the numbers? If we try to do a special call or do you want, or you feel safer doing it at the twenty-third meeting?
July, yeah.
Um, well, a lot of the, a lot of your invoices and final invoices and things won't come in till after the first of July. So, you know, you're not going to have actuals, but you'll be getting closer anytime in July. I'm, I'm comfortable with whatever.
The twenty-third, you think we'll be able to get a really good number?
About, about the end of July is that you're coming?
The July twenty-third?
July twenty-third. I would rather have actual numbers than a guesstimation of what we think we may be so we can, since the budget is so tight, to see as of where we're at.
Boots won't be closed by July twenty-third, but they'll be very, they'll be getting a lot closer.
The fourth, the fourth one in July will be the twenty-eighth. So if you prefer the twenty-eighth, just hold that and if some changes call, like a special call over here.
I mean, if we're not going to hit June thirtieth or July twenty-first, it doesn't really matter. Might as well go to July twenty-eighth to give us as much time as we can, get the numbers.
It is, it is probably smarter ideas to, like, do that then, uh, after you see some of those, uh, final ones. All right, any other questions for Connor? I'm seeing now we have those two contracts we need to approve, the, the general services contracts. They're going for, one's for Blount County, one's for Sevier County. I will take a motion to approve those, to approve the contracts.
Motion approved. Taken.
Taken. A motion approved and a second, Junior Fields. Any questions, discussions on those contracts?
Is there a reason why we're entering into contracts with Blount and Sevier County?
You James?
It seems so far away, I'm just saying.
Well, there's not a lot of options, I know.
I figured.
Do you know the potential? Yes. Don't do the contracts with Blount and Sevier County.
They're, they're adding Blount and Sevier County. We're doing Rutherford now, we're doing Putnam and, uh, there's also one in Giles County, I believe, that we're trying to do.
This just gives you more options.
Just gives more options. What we were faced with, if you remember, just a few weeks ago, we had an incident with a fifteen-year-old who ran through the county, actually ran into the sheriff's vehicle and one of the carless city vehicles. And he's also did some damage in Wilson County and Trousell County. Took him to Putnam. They turned him away, he was pretty violent. Took him to Rutherford, they turned him away, went and takes him back. So we ran out of options and that's when the U Services officer reached out for additional licenses.
Any other questions or special comments to the contracts? See, see analysis is enclosed in the first place, I don't know where it went.
Greta Kirby?
Yes.
Charles Kent?
Yes.
Lynn Brown?
Yes.
Scotty Barrett?
Yes.
Matt Nannier?
Yes.
Cordell Smith?
Yes.
Danny Irisari?
Yes.
Stephen Lesh?
Yes.
Eddie Stout?
Yep.
Casey Elrod?
Yes.
Javin Krebs?
Yes.
Tommy Vane?
Yes.
Junior Fields?
Yes.
Connor McDonald?
Yes.
Teresa Bush?
Yes.
Danny Huff?
Yes.
Ed De La Rosa?
Yes.
All right, that is, thank you. All right, I think that concludes our business for the night. We'll be back for your twenty-third and that's a list of your community's other question amendments at the end of the year, stuff that has to be done and anything else that's going to be back. That's our ready schedule. John left your summary to date, if you know what I have on. All right. Seeing no other business, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, adjourn. Second, Cordell. I am motioning a second to adjourn, I'm motion in favor.
Ah.
Folks, you are adjourned.